Welcome to the Holiday Basketball Showdown. And now for a message from our sponsor.
When I have an itch, I turn to Gold Dust Medicating Residue. It soothes the itch when nothing else could.
Common side effects to Gold Dust Medicating Residue include, but are not limited to, nausea, burning, skin swelling, drinking baby formula, gangrene, visiting Guam, dry mouth, turning into a werewolf, pestering fingernails, sterilization, eating vegan food, comatose, and dizziness.
Gold Dust Medicating Residue does it all. Ask your doctor about it today.
Welcome back to the Holiday Basketball Showdown. Welcome to the world famous Fondy Recreation Center here in Houston, Texas. It's a gorgeous night here in the Bayou City. Let's go to the basketball court and get this game started.
All right, we're just about underway here from again the legendary Fondy Rec Center. You know, I grew up just down the way in South Park.
You too.
And Rob Williams was a South Park legend that came down here. I mean, so many guys you never heard of who came down here and were Fondy legends. So yeah, it was a big, big thing back in the day and even still. My guy Kevin Allen in the Nike Pro Summer League, Kevin Granger and those guys, Kenny Smith.
They're up here, you know, they're here during the year as well.
Yeah.
Here we go, straight down the lane.
Okay, that is...
A travel.
Hey, I wouldn't take that charge.
He took his bags and ran to Dallas with it.
So let's see, I wonder what the strategy is here? Have they practiced? I guess Coach, you'll be able to see that soon enough.
They're in a zone. Here we go. First shot's up, whoa.
Look, any person that wears shoes has to make that shot. And the running layup.
And the Savage has it.
Savage, it's a one and one on a one and a half break.
Oh, good pass. Good pass, score that, score that.
Back to the basket, oh, he drew the foul.
I don't know. I'm not sure if you've seen Kevin Granger play before.
Yes, yes.
He's one of the great scorers, but he flops a lot. I think the Savage has a little Granger.
Granger's getting a little older, can't fly too much. Hurt yourself. Savage at the free throw line and no score here, just underway in the Holiday Basketball Showdown, the Mayor's Office versus the Houston City Council. Now, how many of these people can you tell have had basketball experience?
You know, a few of them. Clearly the Savage has, he has great size, good hands, good feet. Speed, not the best, but his confidence is definitely there.
Well, we did find out that Councilman Amanda Edwards played in middle school.
Yeah, they talked about that earlier, her middle school career. Being outstanding.
So we are on the board, the city council leading this one 1-0. Let's see. Three pointer, good. That's Mayor Turner's squad taking the lead. Emery Disallet. And Emery on the board. And I hope I pronounced that name. I'm sure I butchered the name. 3-1 in this game. Councilman Edwards. Savage, he seems like he's gonna be the floor general.
He's the floor generator, exactly. He's running the ship right here. Here we go, shots up. And he runs the other way as if it's going in.
Now, it looks like the Mayor's Office, they come out with a plane.
Easy money.
There we go. Do we have some ringers out here? I don't know.
I think so, and Mr. T's over here coaching the team up right now. What are we in, ball's coming down the lane? Ball's coming down the lane. The score is wrong, score should be...
It should be 5-1, yeah.
5-1 should be the score. Mr. T's gonna make sure you know.
Well, again, this is a wonderful opportunity for all these folks who work together. Maybe not come into contact with each other on a daily basis, but to come together for this great occasion and have a lot of fun this holiday season.
They also gave a website, www.ghcf.org. If you guys want to donate or, I think it's 100%, so it's no...
Yeah, 100% of the proceeds go towards long-term relief, recovery efforts. Let's see who is this Savage again.
And he scored. Big score right there, and he gets back. Here we go.
I have a feeling he better get his in early.
He's gonna get his career high today. Here we go.
Pulling up for a three.
Good shot, good shot.
That was a clean shot.
Good shot, stay with the city council right here. Control the tempo right here. Oh, turnover, turnover.
If Elvin Hayes was in the game, he couldn't have got that one. So to say that that was a little high is seeing a whole lot. Again, then this one, this 5-3, so I wouldn't anticipate a high-scoring affair tonight, but you never know, they may surprise us.
There's some great defense played here, let's see. Here we go.
All right, it looked like a 2-3 zone, right? Are they playing a little zone action?
They are, they are. Zone action, and she's fouled.
Penzone was, from Mayor Turner's office, was fouled. Let's see what her nickname is. It is Invincible Ingrid Penzone. And again, no phonetics here, so we're doing the best we can. Fast break here. Little rushed, but he still made it happen.
Here we go, here we go. Score's 5-5.
So we have contrasting styles here. And then we have a more deliberate offense from Mayor Turner's office, and the city council is fast-paced.
Come on, number eight.
Now, I don't think pushing the ball up the floor is in the best interest of either these teams. Councilman Edwards, Savage is...
Savage.
He's a beast. He does everything but finish. Top ball game, 14 minutes left in the first half. Some halftime entertainment coming up for you guys. And a lot going on, the Legends will be here, the NBA Legends as well.
Pass to the corner.
Penzone.
It's up. Here we go, here we go.
Councilman Edwards through a low elbow. Fast break opportunity.
Ball coming back the other way.
Coming back the other way, so...
Let's go Mayor's Office, what we got right here?
That nice rebound.
Easy money.
So...
I think he's played before.
And then I guess we'll see how deep these benches are as well. Edwards in the game, oh.
Good pass, good pass. Shots up.
She's scrapping.
Good hustle play.
Pass it out.
Shots up again. And there's a foul. CM Larry Green, Jeezy from the K. I'm not sure what that means.
Jeezy from the K.
Jeezy from the K.
Yeah, you'll have to keep up with the nickname. Gotta work in. Through a low elbow.
Oh, we had some illegal subs going in the game here.
Let's see for the city, Larry Green is about to take some free throws.
So the Legends tell them they have to check in the game, they can't just run it forward? Because she just ran out there. She's running.
All right, now it's time for the subs to come in.
Our subs are going in right now. It's calling, going in. Who else do we have?
I see Councilman Dwight Boykins on... I thought he'd be playing in this with size and athleticism, he didn't, he's not in this one.
He's being smart.
Second free throw is not good.
Savage with the offensive rebound, come on Savage, hold on to it.
Put back, no good. Going the other way, snowbirding. Nice dish. No good.
Offensive rebound, good offensive rebound. Here we go. Transition, city council pushing the other way.
Let's see what happens.
It's a 2-on-2. Bucket, bucket. And that was young CP3.
And so...
A younger CP3, like that.
Three pointer, no good, rebound, city council.
Score's 7-up.
So I mean, it's a lot more competitive than I thought initially.
Yeah, I underestimated the city council. Turn the team a little bit. Here we go.
Coming back though, that's a foul. Timeout on the floor. Again, it's the Holiday Basketball Showdown at the legendary Fondy Rec Center.
Subs are coming in right now.
Okay, so they aren't gonna break it here.
No, I think it's subs, Roadrunner Roberts coming in, number 30. We had another sub coming as well, oh, Crackerjack, number one. What you got, Crackerjack, right here?
Clock is being run.
Here we go.
Oh, running clock, okay.
Shots up.
Rebound, city council.
Young CP3 is pushing it. He throws just a Roadrunner. Some young legs out there right now. Good shot. Still at 7 with 11 minutes.
Now, we brought you in for color, but you're doing a phenomenal job in play-by-play.
Sorry, had it.
Yeah. Because look, we certainly can reverse positions because I can't provide expert analysis. Well, that's why I'm leaning heavily on your expertise.
I'm sorry.
But you were doing a great job, by the way. Mayor Turner's team with the basketball. This is, as you can tell, our first time working together. Penzone penetrates, she has to put up a shot. Rebound, kickback out.
Lefty.
No good, you know, I'm partial to lefty, so rebound, city council.
Let's go, Crackerjack.
So you seem like...
I love this, I love this action.
As Police Chief Osuveta tries to invade the huddle.
Savage.
Yes, I'm trying to get a feel for who you're rooting for, because I'm...
You know, I don't really root for anyone, but the Savage just keeps finding his way to the ball.
And now, another session of Basketball Lingo. Brick. This is a slang term that describes a bad shot in basketball where the player shoots and the ball goes off the rim or off the backboard and does not have a chance to go into the actual basket. Examples include, "With all the bricks the council member has thrown up tonight, they'll be a professional bricklayer by the end of the game." This has been Basketball Lingo.
Do not anticipate that you will win this ballgame for these reasons. The interns that they had last year, they're not gonna be able to play this year. So this is gonna have to be really council members playing and their weak staff. Councilman Amanda Edwards, she says she played basketball in high school, well, this is not high school basketball. I gotta put our best 12 out there on the court, and I would have to play Ashley before I played the mayor. But when you step out on that court, we gonna kick [BLEEP]. That's all I gotta say.
And now, another session of Basketball Lingo. Granny shot. The term granny shot is often used as an insult, and the shot is used by someone who has little to no skill. To shoot the ball with a granny shot implies that a person would shoot the ball like their grandmother, who is weak and frail and has no skill whatsoever. Examples include, "Hey mayor, stop taking granny shots, it's horrible." This has been Basketball Lingo.
If you're just joining us, 8-7 is the score, 9:39 remaining in the first half. Savage doing work.
So Coach T talked about now the interns wouldn't be able to play. You know, they have to play the councilmen. I see Council Crackerjack in, he's doing a great job, had to steal already. We noticed what the new lingo was for the granny shot.
Yeah, and well, we all know brick. What do you think of the underhand free throw for some bad NBA free thrower?
Oh my goodness.
Free throw shooters. Would you ever employ that?
If it gets you a bucket, take it. Take the bucket.
Mayor Turner's team passing around the perimeter. They came out with a strategy, it looks like, Coach. You have to elaborate a little bit on what you see.
I think they're sharing the ball, they're playing team basketball for sure. And one of the things that their coach is yelling about is rebound the ball. So they have to do a better job, they're getting the shots that they want.
And really a more fast-paced offense from the city council, and they take the lead as they add another bucket. It's 10-7. And penetration. And up and nope, no good, but they've had...
They gotta get back in transition.
They've had a couple second chance opportunities. But, oh, he goes between his legs, uh-oh.
Great move, great move. Good pass. Here we go.
That was Bob Cousy-like. Now, that's old-school.
And now the bloopers are coming.
I would imagine they would use this game film throughout the year.
So it's a lot of trash talking going on right here.
Rightfully so. You're in the Fondy, you gotta talk a little bit of noise. It comes with it. I mean, if these walls could talk...
It's like Muggsy Bogues and Shaq talking to each other right now. Hilarious.
I mean, if these walls could talk to games and the players and, I mean, from Hakeem Olajuwon, Clyde Drexler, so many guys have owned his kids. Moses Malone, this is, this was his home.
This is the house, you know, during the summertime, John Lucas hosts a program here as well. And so you have some of the younger upcoming NBA players in the gym, college players in. My players actually train here, maybe four days out of the summer as well. So it's a lot of basketball takes place here. Fun place to be.
Yeah, you talk about it, I mean, you compare this to like the Rucker, the K, Jackson Park in Chicago, Venice Beach. And Fondy's right in the mix with all of those.
Okay, here we go, 7 minutes.
12-7, seven and a half minutes left in the first half. And Mayor Turner's team...
Being really patient.
Yeah, passing around the perimeter.
Being patient against this zone.
And it's smart to play that zone. Turnaround.
They're taking tough shots though, very tough shot.
Yeah, it seems like they have some patience until they...
The shot goes up.
Right. Three pointer up and no good, rebound.
And then we see the granny shots, so here we go. They're building the house down here. We got him about one break right now, there's another one. Oh.
Yeah, we don't have running stats. Now, I want to know who has the oxygen tank, and we have oxygen in the building.
Where is it at?
Have some more folks checking in. 6:44 remaining.
David Robertson just checked in, he's the commander.
Not the admiral, the commander.
I like that. Let's see what he got.
Can you imagine how much time it took to come up with these nicknames? Cash Money, The Prodigy? City council? Trying to get...
They're both in zones, by the way. Tough shot by Savage. Savage is gonna take 40 shots in this game. Let's just go ahead and...
Savage is the James Harden of this game. And because they couldn't capitalize on the other end, Mayor Turner's team puts up a bucket while coming to within 3.129.
And that's J. Coats, who just scored that bucket. They're playing some one-on-one basketball right now. They're getting a little physical, two football players out here.
So we have 10 players on the court at a time, you probably have a good four and a half that are all in. Then you have the guys that take the game way too serious.
JJ Watts is out here. That's a few of them out here for sure.
Yeah. Robot, let's see, Robert Gail's Roadrunner Robert is at the line.
Roadrunner Robert. That's a basketball name.
Yeah, Roadrunner. Have to think of some of the best basketball nicknames.
Skip the Lou.
Skip the Maloo, yeah. Nelly Turnover.
Right in front of our face right there. See what their patience is like. Skip pass, oh my gosh. For those of you that said...
Just a bit outside.
Touchdown. Wrong sport.
Right, right.
I'm glad they were paying attention over there. You checking in?
You gotta tell my man. That's instant offense, right?
Tell me your nickname. It's Mr. Brady.
It's Book 'em Dano, that's the nickname. As Mayor Turner's team drives to the hole.
Easy money, right there.
Out and just couldn't haul in the... Put it down.
We have some subs coming in right here.
Four and a half left in the half.
Book 'em just checked in.
13-9. Really entertaining.
Sammy D, holder.
I'll have to see what department do all of these people come from for the Mayor's team. You know, and I don't guess we're gonna see Mayor Turner as his team puts up a basket to come to within 3. 13-11, 4 minutes left in the first half. The Holiday Basketball Showdown.
Oh shit.
Edwards turns over the ball.
Dunk it, dunk it, dunk it, nods. Oh, he smokes it. I thought he was gonna dunk it. That was my Muggsy Bogues moment right there. Not so much.
Whoa, that's a dunk.
And we get it on the other end, right there.
The momentum changed.
Runs the sideline. Jeez Louise. That was sweet.
Yeah, that was really nice. And it came out of nowhere.
Muggsy, he's five foot five, even.
And the three-pointer is good. So they come to within 1, 15-14. 3:15 left. Yeah, that came out of nowhere, I didn't expect that. What was the over-under on dunks in this game? I would have went, I would have took the under. From the free throw line, no good. Book 'em Dano had a chance to haul in the rebound.
That wasn't even a granny shot. That was my daughter's shot right there. You know, we talk about perfect form and everything, that was it. Perfect form, good job. Just bare rim next time.
Right, right. Again, I'm hoping we'll see Mayor Turner. See if we can get a blowout going, maybe get him in the game.
That would be great. I think he's gonna go in, he's not gonna let us down. He's coming in the game.
It's a one-point game, maybe he can get the game winner. Two and a half left, displaying some of that patience, but you know, when they're in the zone...
There's no shot clock here though.
Right. Oh, he tried to get the foul, he got it. That is James Kosky, dipping keeper's stat. J. Coats. Smart play, drew the foul. Couldn't convert, but hey, let's see if he can convert. Maybe a granny shot from the free throw line, they talked about it during the break.
Let's see, let's see. See what we got here. His perfect form shooting right here. They're free.
Yeah, you would think technically sound.
Hey, there it is, there it is.
Bended knee.
He's a natural for this, he's a natural right here.
There we have it.
Now, to my left, Ms. Carley is being coached up by the Savage over here.
Yeah, she just tried to get in the game, she just walked in the game earlier.
Said, forget the referees, I'm in here. She gotta take a step back. Too many on, she didn't say who she subbed on for. But she's ready.
That is Carla Sisneros. And she's a council member.
Okay, so now an intern, she's actually a council member, and she's gonna get a bucket.
District H. Whoa! Great pass and great finish. So we're way over the over-under on dunks in this ballgame.
We are, we are.
But still a competitive one-point game.
We underestimated them too, I did for sure.
And cross-court pass, three-pointer was there, he didn't take it, he penetrated.
That's a bucket, watch.
J. Coats, good.
Oh, J. Coats, a good bucket. We got a good game here, you guys.
That's John Stockton.
You're right, you're right.
Okay, she's setting a pick.
Oh.
Long three-pointer, no good.
He should stick to the dunks, okay? Over the top works for him, not off the dribble.
Councilman Carla Sisneros.
And he subbed out. He pulls that and he is subbed out of there.
Now, how brave is she to set a pick in this game? I mean, that's...
Hey, I like her. I like her toughness. Here we go, what we got over here?
Book 'em Dano with the ball. Turnover.
I see you, yo, keep going, yo.
Wait a minute, is that a, is that a ring?
Oh, yo.
Didn't she play earlier?
She did play earlier, but she actually worked for the city, for the councilmen actually, but she played with other teams. Yo played at Ohio State if I'm not mistaken.
Rebound, up and no good, under a minute left in the half.
I think she done though, she blew a gasket though. That's all she got. But at this point, we don't need an oxygen tank, I think they're doing a pretty good job, staying in the game.
Rotating in and out.
The subs are good here.
So again, 18-17. J. Coats, really, he sparked this offense, right? So it's a whole lot of fun here, Fondy Rec Center.
There's some yelling in the stands, it caught my attention for a second, I'm sorry. She yelling at the coach. I'm yelling at the coach. The coaches are always right.
Said the coach. How do you handle hecklers?
I don't hear them.
Really?
My players tell me all the time, I never hear it.
You never hear?
Because I'm always yelling at the girls, so I never hear.
They can't out yell you.
Yeah, they can't, they can't, not at all.
So after all the adversity in the first half, so Mayor Turner's team takes the lead here.
There's a shot up.
Good.
Good shot. That wasn't a granny shot right there, that was a bucket, straight through the net.
So you said she played at Ohio State?
Yes, yes. She plays on a regular here in the city at Justin's Gym, so she's familiar with these floors.
So are they gonna wait, play down to the last shot with 30 seconds left?
Playing middle school basketball, no shot clock, so, oh, great dunk down.
Almost one pass too many, but they converted. Now, if you were coaching, well, we'll get to your halftime adjustments. I want you to think about that though.
Don't give up a bucket right here, that's what I would say. Don't foul, don't, oh.
Did she make a move? Whoa, I have an obstructive view here, but...
Get that out of here, she made a great pump fake, they jumped, and she goes up and they knocked it to the wall, right out of here. Oh, they called a foul, she got hit in the head, this is what the ref said.
Okay.
So she's gonna get two shots with 4 seconds left to go, that's a no-no.
Now, these refs are reporting to the scorer's table.
They really are.
And no one is taking a score.
Not at all, there's no book here.
All right, no book.
Put stuff here in front of us.
But you know they want one, right? You have to know that they will want one.
Right.
A council member, Amanda Edwards, at large position four. Now, how about that free throw for him? Yeah, look in the monitor to see that, Coach.
Yeah, I couldn't really see it, because there's three people standing in front of us right here, now I know how everyone feels. So we can't say too much to him, right?
Right, yeah, we want to make sure, yeah.
He keeps it safe, got it.
And up and no good. A good for him.
Oh, he just got hit in the mouth.
2-1. He will not get it off in time.
Well, that's our first half right there.
One half is in the books, a lot of halftime festivities coming up again, the Holiday Basketball Showdown at the legendary Fondy Rec Center.
What's happening? All eyes on the honorable Mayor Sylvester Turner, please. All eyes on this incredible man, and right now, there's gonna be a very special presentation from city council manager, Ms. Vanetta Jones.
Hello, everybody. We're gonna make a presentation. The NBA legends would like to thank the mayor for all the hard work he's done this year. So we have some NBA legends here. We're gonna let them introduce themselves.
Ali Taylor.
Howard Smith.
Robert Reed.
Reggie Dixon.
They would like to give the mayor an autographed basketball for him to have. And Alvin Hayes was here, but he had to leave. So his signature's on there as well. Greg, get in.
Love you, man.
Reggie's gonna sit the second half.
It may be better in the second half.
All right now.
All right.
Jeff, is it time to present that key?
Yes.
Reggie's gonna sit the second half. My daughter's playing this game.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, boo.
I hope you took advantage of that photo op. And now, congratulations to you, mayor. And now, our mayor has a very special presentation.
If I can have you a second, I wanna present something to one of our rappers that's been doing some outstanding work in our community, especially in 2017. Trader Truth, why don't you come over this way, man? Look, I wanna take this opportunity to present something to someone who's been doing outstanding job. He's a rapper in our city, but he's been doing some tremendous community work, especially, especially after Hurricane Harvey. Can't say thank him enough. So Trader Truth from the city of Houston. I wanna take this opportunity to present to you the key to the city of Houston, man. To Trey the Truth.
I have no worries. I appreciate you, man.
Thank you, man. We can't thank you enough, okay? Appreciate you.
Appreciate you, brother. You got one, too?
Thank you also very, very much. Thanks, Trey. Thanks, 90.9. Thank you.
You know we love you, Mayor Turner. You know we love you. And now, while Team Turner is getting it together, because it's a close game, we have some halftime entertainment for you. Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together and welcome the Chapter Boys.
Yes, sir. Shout the city in the building. It's not often where we pay homage to our, you know, our southern roots. To where we are, you know, pay respects to pretty much the blood that went through us, man. Southside Vamp, Six to Vamp. Let's go. First off, rest in peace, Wicket Cricket. And I ain't tripping, homie. Promise I'ma kick it with you. I know you up in heaven smiling with your windows tinted. And next time, we still tipping the grain grist up. And even now, so say we got a problem. Cause when the H go up, can't nobody stop us. See, we know how to flip a dollar to $100. $100, get deposit to your baby mama. We ain't tripping. That's how the game go. H still back without a raincoat. Boy, this the city of the dream team. High king touring. God save, God save, God save YB. And I remember hot summer, hot winter. I couldn't fight, so the block made a hospital. And chapter city coming to a station near you. We legendary like that pass. Watch me swing through. Watch me swing through. I'ma go hard when I swing in my city. I'ma go hard when I bump in my city. I'ma go hard when I stunt in my city. H-Town, that I'm did it. Beautiful women is all around in my city. It goes down in every town in my city. Represent, represent my city. Somebody get my lips. Pinky ring shining by itself while the rest of my four fingers grip. Wood grain candy paint twenties on the field. Dropping up to 30 on the 50 for a lift. I ain't ballin', yet my mama told me speak until I get it. I'm dipped in lyrics, imagination on fruition. Hustle and flex muscle. My people is too strong. Strong ovation for the city of Houston. We roughnecks, bout flex and talk mess and eat chicken. Cryin' hard and get it in devout business. Hard man done done it once again. I'ma go and break 'em off something proper. Keep your head up and stand up. Always be a leader. Just a couple guidelines from my father. H-Town made, H-Town really. H-Town made, H-Town written. I'ma swing through. Watch me swing through. I'ma go hard when I swing in my city. I'ma go hard when I bump in my city. I'ma go hard when I stunt in my city. H-Town, that I'm did it. Beautiful women is all around in my city. It goes down in every town in my city. Represent, represent my city. I'ma swing through. Watch me swing through. I'ma go hard when I swing in my city. I'ma go hard when I bump in my city. I'ma go hard when I stunt in my city. H-Town, that I'm did it. Beautiful women is all around in my city. It goes down in every town in my city. Represent, represent my city. H-Town.
Now, what is your title in your job description here at the gym?
Funny you should ask that. I am what is known as a squeak scientist, or more precisely, a squeakologist. And basically, my job is to calibrate the athletic shoes and the, on the hardtop so that they are acoustically correct or have a peak squeak, as I call it. If you think of the squeak of those shoes on the parquet floor as a symphony of sound, I'm basically Mozart or Kenny G. And you know what? Those two are basically the same. Basically.
I've never heard of a squeak scientist. How did you get this job?
My good sir, ma'am, my good lady, listen. By 1997, with all the air this and pump that features and sneaker technology, the NBA game was going deaf. Court squeaks were down by a whopping 18% and falling faster than a Kardashian's clothing around a camera. Most didn't notice, but I could hear it. And at that moment, I dedicated my life to the squeak sciences, basically.
City Council, what an entertaining first half, Coach. I'm Devin Wade, of course, for KTSU. And Coach Janetta Hayes-Perry of Texas Southern, the Lady Tigers. What, give me your prescription for second-half success for both of these teams.
You know, I owe an apology to the city council. I underestimated them coming out. But for this second half, you know, city council have to keep doing exactly what they're doing. You don't make adjustments when, you know, things are going your way. So I think they're playing pretty good in transition and they're taking open shots. They're rebounding the ball pretty well. But the mayor's team definitely gonna have to pick it up. They're gonna have to make some shots. Right now, we're taking granny shots. We're building houses. A whole bunch of them.
With the bricks, right? 21-19 officially on the scoreboard in favor of Mayor Turner's team over the defending champs, the city council. So again, I hear some rumblings and some complaints about some ringers out here. So they'll have to sort that out in the postgame.
Heard illegal players on the floor, things of that nature. Lot of complaint about the fouls being called. We got good referees here. So let's see. Good 20 minutes basketball right here.
Okay.
We got a little one on the court. He's shooting. He just hit a bucket.
Yeah.
Now, that ain't one of our legal players right there.
But yeah, he hadn't realized. My brother did that at a game one time. Ran across the floor during the game. Start, second half action underway. City Council with the basketball.
Shots up.
No good and long rebound.
Like I said in the first half, he needs to play above the rim. He had two good dunks early in the game. Now he's jacking. Come on.
Yeah, and we don't have a number on him, so he may be one of those...
The nameless man.
Yes. Yeah, we don't know what department he's in. Three-point attempt, no good. Rebound. City Council, they'll bring it up. Go with that, Coach.
Take high-percentage shots, guys.
Back to the basket. Spin underneath, reverse lane.
Tough move.
Good attempt. Rebound, mayor's office. Trapped up high. Kick it over. It's wide open.
He thought about it. Oh, my gosh.
And he made it.
That went in.
He was surprised he was at wide open, right?
He was. He almost ran with it like the Road Runner. But, good bucket.
Yeah, like I said earlier, this is a...
Crackerjack, come on. Boom. You know what? That didn't even hit the rim. Oh, my gosh, that was good.
We're worried about shot clock violations in this one.
Not at all.
Back up the court.
Not at all.
Like I said, this is a Washington Generals versus the Washington Generals. City Council with the rebound. Yeah.
Here we go.
Sweet Georgia Brown. All the way to the hole. The nameless one, number 32. Yeah, two dunks in this game and a nice layup there. So six points for him. Now, they're getting away from what they did and how they found success in the first half. They were very patient. Another shot.
Oh, Lord.
No good. And the refs are on point, I have to tell you that.
I always agree with the refs.
Now, in the game before this televised game, the finance department played Parks and Rec. As there's a foul on the floor. Going to the basket or... That was going to the basket.
Yeah, I thought that was.
A shooting foul. He'll go to the line for a couple.
I hear some yelling over here from the coach.
Adam Intern.
32 is called Adam Intern? Perfect. We were calling him the nameless man.
The nameless one. Well...
So one of the interns actually made it. There we have it.
That's where the complaining came from, right? Drexler.
Drexler. Okay. We got it.
Thank you, City Council.
Adam the Intern.
Hide the day of the game? Let's go to the day of the game. You know, where's the confetti? We need a bucket of confetti in this game. As Adam the Intern.
And he takes a gunshot. He finally hit one.
Of cour-, but of course, you know...
He's on a roll now.
Yeah, he's among the, he's probably the most athletic guy on the floor.
Definitely. I didn't see that pass coming or this move right here. Oh, my goodness. This is a game of bloopers right now. Let's hit this. That's how you fix it right there. Great shot.
They take back the lead and it sees our battle.
Great shot.
26-25.
Where's the defense, guys? Where's the defense?
Well, you know, they have to gloat and enjoy that one.
That's an air ball, look.
Fast break coming down the floor.
Air ball. Patient. You got one more coming. Run it to your left. Patient, and he pulls it, really.
That's good. That looked good. Nice rebound.
Ball going the other way. Ball going the other way quickly.
See, now, this is where your guard has to know his personnel. Everybody can't make it up to court.
Shoot that, Crackerjack.
You got it, City Councilman? That was...
What did they call? What was it called? Travel or...
Let's see what the call was. It goes towards, goes back in the direction of Mayor Turner's squad.
Hey, I think we need those tanks now. We have one or two that are running out of gas.
I'm telling you, we need some confetti. Where's the bucket of confetti?
Running out of gas right here.
We need Sweet Georgia Brown playing. And Jack Christie, Crackerjack, checks out.
It's off. That's CP3, the young CP3. And Road Runner running with him.
Yeah, he's that, though. He calls himself the Road Runner. He's doing just that, the foul on the play.
That was late. That was pretty late.
And, but you know, out of habit, the referees continue to...
Come over and give the number out. There's no book.
Coach, why don't you find somebody to fuss at? I mean, let's keep, make sure you're midseason pool.
Gotcha.
I'll tell you what, and the coaches, I mean, I don't know what the wardrobe budget is for the coaches, but basketball coaches are the best dressed in all sports.
You know, they're usually pretty sharp, cause to my right right now, this brother is sharp. And he actually has on a jersey, too. But I love the shoes, his intensity.
After one of two is made, a tie ballgame here with 14 minutes to go in the game. Three-point play, up, long rebound.
We've built a mansion somewhere in the city. And I can hear one of, one of the young ladies, I think it's Councilman Edwards, screaming for Mayor Turner to get in the game now. Get in. Now, she's the cheerleader. She's the cheerleader now. And then her intern scores again.
Right. Let's see if they penetrate the zone. No foul call.
What happens?
No foul call. Adam the Intern.
Uh-oh, Adam the Intern. Whoa, whoa.
Nice touch pass.
Hey, that was that five slammer jammer right there, actually. I saw some Clyde Drexler, Akim Olajuwon, not, but I mean, it was, it was pretty close. It was pretty close.
Timeout on the floor.
And there's waving hands going, jumping up and down from the councilman's team.
Timeout on the floor, and we will take one with them. In the Holiday Basketball Showdown, mayor's office versus city council from the legendary Fondy Recreation Center. Devin Wade alongside Coach Janetta Hayes-Perry. 13-32 remaining, and the score is 30-26 in favor of the Houston City Council.
So the coaches are coming over to us, giving us the subs and the check-ins. We have nothing to do with it, sir. We have our headsets, but I get it.
I don't know, maybe people just defer to your authority, but if people have been asking you questions since you got here...
It's been him the entire time. Where's the water? Where's the... I don't know, sir.
Right. You have...
But I love his intensity. He's great.
So we kept it here the whole time, ready to resume. 13-32 remaining. 30-26 in favor of the city council. But Mayor Turner's team is trying to rally back. Foul on the play. And fouled is number 32, actually, yes, 33, Kelly from the mayor's team.
Special K.
Special K. I like that. That's a good nickname. What, best basketball nickname? Earl the Pearl? What, who'd he have? Round Mound the Rebound? That was sparkly. He didn't like that one. First free throw up and no good.
I mean, something more modern would be like the Shaq Attack. That's something that probably is in my era a little bit.
You go Dr. J. That's, you know, hey.
He's the doctor, you're right.
Yeah, that man, how do you do?
Super Coop.
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying, I have to think back to some of my favorite nicknames in the NBA. There was a lane violation, so Special K gets to try it yet again.
You know, I have to be a little biased. My former boss, close friend, Super Coop, she makes it happen all the time.
Yep. Second free throw up and no good. Cynthia Cooper, you referring to?
Yes, yes.
And city council can extend this lead after two missed free throws, but Kelly, Special K comes up with the steal.
Oh, oh.
Another steal.
Multi-boggle turns it over.
He got a pass to the guy in the same color jersey.
That's CP3 that just scored that. The young CP3. I'm not sure about that.
Nearly steals it again, yeah.
But, you know, let's see. I thought we was gonna see some basketball where I could kind of make fun a little bit, but to be honest, this has been a really, really good game. Like, I'm...
Impressed by, yeah.
Yeah, they're very sound. They know what they're looking for, for the most part.
Getting a little physical down there in the lane.
Yeah, they, they all shooting the ball like they're shooting 40 to 50% from the field. We're shooting more like 15%.
Yeah, I mean, high rate...
So we gotta rebound the ball.
Yeah, high rate of turnovers, but again, I'm surprised by some of that athleticism we've seen. So I would imagine as we get closer to the finish of this, that the intensity will, will pick up.
Right, right. We're penetrating, getting paint touches, kick out, so we're taking open shots. We're not forcing bad shots. J. Kos is getting ready to sub in the game here. I think they have four points in the game, jump shot, two free throws. Pretty impressed.
And...
They're taking their time with their shot selection this time. Far off to the left, though. Come on.
Road Runner pushing it. Up and no good. He gets his rebound.
Always stop the ball.
Lose the ball. Now he's upset with the referee. Breakaway foul.
Well, the one thing that the councilman's team just did was they stopped the layup. They fouled in the open court and stopped that layup, cause he was going downhill pretty hard.
And Koski shakes back into the game. Had a couple of big plays for them earlier in this game. He's running point now. Weaving through the zone, Kelly.
He did, didn't he?
Special K.
Special K. Oh.
He picked the wrong one.
That was like a Mutombo block. Get that out of here. Uh-oh, Crackerjack with the pass. No look pass.
Whoa! Did you see this, the three-point?
Nice, yo. Assist by Crackerjack. Love it. The councilman sets her up for that one pretty good. Hey, the interns aren't the only ones making it happen this game.
Rebound. The big female contribution, she played in the first game as well. Another dunk! The third of the game. Now, this is getting, turning into a beat down.
Hey, that was a nasty one. He actually dunked on somebody. It was two people down there.
This is a beat down.
Coach is not happy. Coach is talking so much noise for the game. He was talking about whipping their behinds.
Right, right, and the promotion.
And some other words, too. And now... Ooh, my goodness. Great pass. Timeout, Coach.
Hey.
Called it for.
Is it a white flag in the area?
No white flag. No white flag. Come on. Come on, Mayor Turner's office. No white flag here. But it's quiet.
Getting quiet over here on the mayor's side.
And now, HTV presents an inside sports exclusive with Blanca Beltran. Brought to you by Goldust.
This is Blanca Beltran reporting from the local basketball court with the interview that you've all been waiting for. Love him or hate him, but let's emphasize on hate, because he has been the controversial discussion throughout this year. And here we have Lamar Basket. How you doing, Lamar?
I'm gonna tell you how I'm doing, or more specifically, how my son is doing. Do you see him back there? That is the greatest basketball player that will ever live. Do you see how he's shooting those shots? I'm telling you right now, he is phenomenal. What do you got to say about that?
Well, really, I mean, what is his name?
Ms., don't worry about what his name is. All that matters is that I created him with my two bare hands. I spoke into his system. So in reality, since he's gonna be the greatest basketball player to ever live, really means I'm gonna be the greatest basketball player to ever live.
Can I stop now?
Shut up, boy. Make sure you finish those 200 shots, and maybe I'll let you have breakfast today. Now, where were we?
Okay, apparently, parents live vicariously through their children.
No, we weren't. No, that wasn't it. No. No, that's right, my son's gonna be the greatest basketball player to ever live, better than Michael Jordan and LeBron put together. I'm telling you right now, the best, and really, I'm the best. Just hand the money over now, don't even think about it, come on, let's do it.
Okay, this is Blanca Beltran, I apparently need a new agent, but we're gonna go back to the basketball court where everybody's still in progress and playing their game.
Hurry up, boy.
Fundy Rec Center, the legendary Fundy Rec Center, where the Holiday Basketball Showdown is, uh, turning into a, uh, showing out by the City Council as they are starting to open up, uh, a lead here, leading by 13. And the game has been competitive the entire time, they lead this one 39 to 26, eight minutes left in the game.
Now, we can't ignore that commercial that we just saw, Lamar Basket, hilarious. That's child abuse. The kid doesn't want to shoot anymore.
Allen the intern, airball, well, he did get the net, so...
You know, we, we talked about playing to your strengths.
I think somebody needs to get a technical.
The coach is definitely out the coaching box. He left the coaching box. He is, you know, a little out of control right now, they're down 13, but it's still a game. He has to relax.
And, uh, again, seven and a half left. Surprised that this one kind of opened up quick.
It did.
Cross-court to Allen the intern. He's our early MVP here. Oh, that is not right.
My gosh, it is not fair to do anyone like that.
It's not right.
That is his fourth dunk on the game, his second dunk on somebody. They're on chairs in this gym right now.
Timeout, is that a timeout? Allen the intern is gonna have to get out.
Mayor Turner has kicked him off the floor.
He's...
Mayor Turner has kicked him off the floor.
Allen the intern after his fourth dunk.
Mayor Turner said, no, no, no more, we're done.
And that is an executive decision.
He's taking the ball. He said, it's my ball, we're out of here.
Now, that is what I'm talking about.
Get out the gym.
Allen the intern. I mean, after four, after four dunks, and Chief Ossova is arguing his case, Mayor Turner's out on the court.
Mayor Turner, seven minutes left to go, we have to finish the game.
Maybe, maybe he can come in and, and save the day for his team.
That's the longest timeout we've had too.
I tell you what, I, the HR department is gonna have to scout, you know, start scouting players before they hire a couple of people next year. As, uh, I mean, again, 41-26, and this was after, uh, Mayor Turner's team took the lead 25, uh, 26-25, so, yeah. This is quite a turn of events, but I think if we can get Allen the intern out of the game, I, I think Mayor Turner's team can get back in this thing. Can't get it all back at one time, let's see if they can hit some threes.
He scared me.
And the police chief, Ossova, right in front of us, he had scored a table.
He said they take a oath at the police department. Okay.
Questioning the integrity of the City Council. This is high drama, the Game of Thrones. Cross-court pass to Roadrunner, Roadrunner doing all sorts of things.
They're going at him, they're going at him, throw it. Good pass by yourself, kid.
Yep, and so let's see if they can capitalize here. One on four.
Oh.
Now, how sore do you think some of these, uh, people will be tomorrow? Some of these folks that don't play basketball on a regular basis?
Oh, they're gonna be sore tonight. They're gonna try to roll over, say, why did I do that?
Right.
But what they need to do when this game's over, seriously, they need to stretch really good. A good stretch will help. Still gonna be sore with a good stretch.
Maybe we can sneak you in the huddle for Mayor Turner's team, see if you can give some advice. Now, you, you have a player with you, so maybe you can get her in the game.
Like, she's sitting up there just shaking her head, shaking her head, she...
What could she do in the lane?
What's funny is, they're all on her snap right now.
So you guys, Texas Southern, play on Sunday?
Play on Sunday.
At the H and P Arena?
H and E Arena, at 7:00 PM. Uh, we host Paul Quinn University, and then we turn around and play at home on New Year's Day. We start SWAC play on New Year's Day, we open up, I think, to Southern University.
All right.
Um, it should be really competitive this year, I'm excited, I'm excited about seeing the conference, how much it's grown.
Well, it is, uh, that's coming up, but we have five and a half left here, 41-27 favored the City Council, and again, Allen the intern out of the game.
Yeah, he's done, he's been, he's been put on the sideline. Like, I like Cracker Jack, he can pass.
Yes.
His no look passes, I love. Now, if the mayor's office want to stay in this, they gotta score, they gotta connect on some buckets right here, what in the world?
I don't, he was trying to throw alley-oop.
The worst pass.
Three-pointer, no good, if they can convert on some of these three-pointers, that didn't work either.
And between my team and two hours of practice, I saw some bad passes, but that one had to be the worst of the day.
That was an alley with no hoop, huh?
No hoop at all.
And the mayor's team with a three-point attempt, no good, long rebound.
Just a lot of Hail Marys right now.
Roadrunner, lost control. You know he wanted to dunk.
He did, he did.
You know he wanted to dunk that one.
You know what? His mind told him he could, but his body just won't allow him to.
And this is opening up quite a bit.
Oh, he's taking some tough buckets. I don't know his name, because he's nameless as well, but tough buckets, all game, plays hard. Are you, are you gonna play with your hat on? Leave your hat on? You gonna leave your hat on?
No, you...
I'm asking.
So, so there you go, coach.
Love it.
Free throw up and good.
I love the swag of number 25 going into the game. Um, let me find him on here somewhere, here we go, DJ Jazzy Jeff.
Uh-huh, that's Spatac?
Squickety, squickety, squick.
Jeff Spatac, DJ Jazzy Jeff with the cap on.
He was ready.
No, he took the cap off, you talked him out of it.
Oh no, I want him to play with swag.
Second free throw up and good. 43-29, 14-point lead.
It's kind of scary. Jazzy Jeff is on the same side with Cracker Jack, make me a little nervous. Is he gonna get a rebound? Oh, he got a rebound.
He did.
First one, baby.
Councilman Edwards put up a shot.
Hey, reward yourself, keep running, Jazzy Jeff, oh shit, shoot. I'm sorry.
We are over YouTube for television.
I'm sorry, no.
We will, we will be banned for life.
Oh my gosh, no, seriously.
City Council.
I got so excited for Jazzy Jeff, because he was going in with his hat on.
Nice, Cracker Jack, oh. Couldn't hold on to it. City Councilman Edwards with the pass. Now we have, checking in number 37 for, and we don't have him, him on the, they're calling for the mayor here. And Jazzy Jeff is, just like that, is right back out of the game, coach.
Oh, Jazzy Jeff, good job, Jazzy Jeff. So, and he holds his hands up like, why are you sending me out? My player just texted me and said that one of the fans is holding a sign up saying, she's dancing and yelling, granny's going wild. They are really, really cheering for the mayor's office, he has a whole, um, fan squad here, sitting here with shirts on. Um, Turner squad shirts and everything, and they, they do have signs, it's really cute.
No, the three-pointer is not, yeah, it's not good, but it, we're under two minutes now, frantically trying to throw up three-pointers to get back in this one.
There's a lot of shots going up here.
Finally, they get on the board again.
I just love the excitement for what, what the cause is for. Um, this has been a great game, and...
No question, and they're gonna call a foul and check some, oh, a timeout on the court. Let's see if they're gonna take one or keep it here with us. But like you said, uh, for a great cause, want to again talk about that, as, uh, it's for the Hurricane Harvey Relief Fund, set up by Houston's, uh, Mayor Sylvester Turner and Harris County Judge Emmett, and is focused on immediate and long-term relief efforts in Harris County and Houston, which may include city residents in Fort Ben or Montgomery County. And, uh, we talked about, uh, the fund does not charge any fees, so 100% of the donations go to immediate and long-term relief efforts. Uh, for information, you can contact 713-333-2237, or go online to www.ghcf.org. That is the Greater Houston Community Foundation. It's a public charitable foundation focused on helping, helping donors expand their philanthropic impact here in the city of Houston. As, uh, as I speak, a minute 35 remaining in this one, 43-31 in favor, as, uh, Councilman Boykins, who's been the biggest cheerleader, checks into the game. District D.
Oh, he is in the game, isn't he?
They are really clowning now.
He's in the game with his blue jean pants on, if I'm not mistaken.
I know, that's, that's, that's new.
Yeah, a new regime, just a new, new style.
Now with that, it's a 10-point game, could we? Is it possible? May it happen?
It's definitely possible, it's definitely possible. CP3, young CP3.
Trapping in the backcourt.
What did we call it, timeout?
No, it was a foul. It looks like that was a foul, no?
I'm not really sure. Because the referees are no longer coming over.
Right, and they finally got the message, right?
I've seen cargo pants, I've seen blue jean pants, I've seen a hat.
Let's see if they can get him a shot. He, he's hanging out on the wing. Councilman Edwards.
Oh, good shot, and our own rebound, way to go in there.
That is...
She's holding her wrist.
That is a loose ball foul on Dee Williams, let's see who we have here.
He was like Swiper.
Dwight Williams, he is HTV Division Manager, Will the Thrill's nickname.
Like Swiper.
Three-point shot is up and no good, under a minute left to play.
All you see is bodies flying.
And it's all over but the shouting.
Shoot it again.
Back in the day, you used to say, turn out the lights, because the party's over.
Turn off the lights.
No, not that verse. And a reverse layup is good, uh, an eight-point game here with 38 seconds left.
Oh, wow.
Boykins with the ball, Councilman Boykins.
Hold it, just hold it, they have to foul you. They have to foul you, don't shoot, there's no shot clock.
She rushed it.
That was like a slingshot.
Right. That took all effort.
And he's gonna dunk it, I knew that was coming, fine.
Now it's a six-point game.
Just hold the ball.
Six-point game.
Hold the ball. I'm talking to the coach over here, hold the ball.
Now, that is not fair.
Hold the ball, kid, hold the ball, don't shoot.
You gotta foul.
No.
Oh, Boykins will take the shot. Rebound, they'll get it out on the outlet, two-on-one break. This is getting close.
Timeout, 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 coach, timeout, coach.
Five seconds left in the game.
They should have picked a timeout quickly, they gotta go for a steal right here.
This is quite a turn of events. They foul with four seconds left, so...
Coach, we're gonna have to talk in a second. I'm gonna have to talk to Coach about his strategy right here.
Oh, take away, yeah, add him in turn.
He says, take away the interns' points and see who wins, they did ban them from the game.
Well, he has four dunks, so if you just take away his dunks, I think he only hit one outside shot.
He has four dunks, and two dunks were on people.
So let's see, if, I mean, it's, it's close to out of reach anyway, but, yeah, maybe, maybe in the Holiday Showdown, there's a four-point play somewhere.
And with this basketball right now, from this free throw line set, he missed and make one, we could call a timeout and advance the ball.
Right.
Advance the ball, get it on your end, score real quick, you're down three, go for a steal or a foul.
Well, I tell you what, it has been a pleasure to call this game with you. Uh, my first time calling the, uh, basketball, Holiday Basketball Showdown, hopefully it won't be our last. Want to thank, uh, staff and management, KTSU, 90.9, your community station, the heart and soul of Houston. Want to remind folks, uh, you can catch the Texas Southern Lady Tigers, 7:00 PM on Sunday at the H and P Arena. And for those of you who are interested, the Sports Talk with Devin Wade podcast, I'm gonna have to get you on the podcast.
Love to be on, thank you for having me too, I really, really appreciate it, I've enjoyed every moment of this.
Want to thank the mayor's office and the city of Houston for having us a part of this event. And again, after a really challenging year, where a lot of these challenges have been met by these great people right before us, who've guided the city, I mean, if you think about how bad it could have been from a management standpoint, we have recovered tremendously well and continue to do so, uh, under the leadership of all of these wonderful folks.
We're extremely grateful for them, you know, from the councilmen to mayor's office to the police chief, they did an amazing job, you know, during some very trying times. And they're still working now to make sure our city is up and running, and everyone is getting everything they need. I'm, I'm just pleased to actually see the faces that, you know, up close, who made our city safely get released.
They want the mayor in the game.
They want the mayor in.
I don't think it's gonna happen, they're, they're playing for the win.
Mayor Turner is like, I've been over here all this time, leave me alone.
The first free throw up and no good. Like Denise Williams says, it's gonna take a miracle.
Oh, my goodness.
Second free throw, no good. And... That will be, there's a timeout on the floor. So again, yeah, I've gotten calls from all over the country, people saying, hey, what great leadership you guys have in the city of Houston, and I could not agree more. What a great event and a great occasion to come and celebrate, you know, a, a really, really challenging year, in which, uh, we went through the ups and downs, even got a little bit of snow.
We did, we did.
That was, that was fun, so...
I mean, just to look around right now in the Fundy and see everyone here and the support for, um, everyone playing in this event, it's amazing. It's amazing just to see how much fun they're having, and for us to be able to smile again, um, after trying times as well.
With four and a half seconds left, hey, it's, it's not quite over, so miracles can't happen, so we'll have to see, uh, how this takes place, but again...
Hey, they advanced the ball.
Yes, on the timeout, so they heeded your advice.
Yes, advanced the ball.
Again, a whole lot of fun.
Let's see what he got here, what, what did Coach draw up for us over here?
Well, we need a four-point play if we're gonna go into overtime.
We need a quick score.
Do I dare say this may be headed for overtime?
Uh, if, if the interns sit out, maybe.
Oh, now he's trying to lobby for a technical foul. Quick three. One shot, no good, long rebound.
It's a game.
And it's over, and the Houston, uh, the Holiday Basketball Showdown is in the books. And retaining their title is, uh, the Houston City Council beating Mayor Turner's team to the tune of 43 to 39. Stay tuned for post-game festivities, been a total blast and a wonderful, wonderful occasion. Do we, do we name an MVP? Is that what we're doing here?
Well, if we do, we know who it is.
Add them in turn. The intern, and they are gloating.
Where did Savage go?
Savage left that in the first half.
Oh, okay.
He did a Willis Reed.
Oh, no, there he is.
Did he come back? Oh, he went to the shower and came out. And with that, we are gonna get out of here, want to thank you guys so much for tuning in.
Again, I, I've never heard of, um...
I, I, I don't expect you have heard. Mine is the fakeless job. Hours of painstaking work on the hands and on the knees, checking for squeaks. I alone turn up the highs when the court is flat and dampen the reverb when the court's too hot. Funny thing is, I'm terribly allergic to the rubber used to make the basketball, so I can't touch those at all. Oh, and the color orange.
What about the color orange?
I'm allergic to that too, basically.
So, um, you can hear all the shoes behind you?
Yes, yes.
Tell me what you hear right now.
Okay, uh, mostly, mostly blue.
Blue shoes.
Yeah, and there's some white in there as well. Um, there may be, um, from the Adidas, they have stripes.
Do, uh, do people actually hire you, or is this a recreation for you?
You know what? This is a labor of love. It's, uh, it's who I am, okay? When you hear that squeak, I want you to hear Spalding. Spalding's coming. Spalding loves you. When you hear that squeak, I want you to hear Spalding. Spalding's coming. Spalding loves you.